Good eve, excuse me. Good evening and welcome to the Sandwich. Are we on? Yes, we are. Welcome to the school committee meeting of January 8th, 2025, the first meeting of the new year. Members of the public may listen and watch the school committee meeting via live stream at www.sandwichtv.org and the Sandwich Community TV Education Channel 8. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The first item of the evening is the first public forum. Does anybody wish to be heard at public forum? Seeing no one, I will close the public forum. Next item is review and act on the meeting minutes of December 11th, 2024. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion that we review and vote on the meeting minutes from December 11th, 2024.
Motion made by Danielle, seconded by Bert. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That is unanimous. They are approved. The next item is correspondence and announcements. I don't have any. Does anyone else? Danielle?
I just have one. Next Friday night in the Sandwich High Auditorium, there's the karaoke rock band night. Do all the proceeds will go to the class of 2027. So it's a local dad, Greg Richards, in town and his band, and they wanted to give back to the community, which is a great idea. So his band is going to perform on the auditorium stage, and the kids are welcomed, students, community members, whoever wants to. Maybe Kevin Surratt will sing some Bruce Springsteen. We'll see. We can get him up there. So yeah, it's next Friday night from 7 until 10:00. And there's been, it's been in the Blue Knight's Highlights, the Castle Chronicles, so we'll stay tuned for more info to the public for that.
Thank you very much. Next item up is superintendent's report.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. I only have, seeing that tonight is kind of a budget-heavy night, only one item in my superintendent's update. And it's kind of a follow-up over an issue that we discussed, I think, back in late September when we kind of review attendance data and so on. And the issue is chronic absenteeism. And the state defines it as missing 10% or more of the school year. And 10% out of 180 days is obviously missing 18 days. And as I say in the background notes, this is a state and national issue, particularly post-COVID, for a whole host of reasons. But I thought I'd share with the committee kind of an update of where we are. As a district leadership team, we've had a couple of discussions about this. That column in the far right I shared with you back in September at what our chronic absenteeism rate was for last school year. And again, kind of the, you have to think about it a little bit like, what? Our youngest students have the highest chronic absenteeism rate. Again, all of these pieces are kind of like a thousand-piece puzzle. It's not just one thing. And keep in mind, there's no differentiation of excuse versus unexcused absences. The data is the data is the data, and absence is an absence. So as of yesterday, actually, well, today was day 80 of our school year. Time does fly. So I asked Sue Garvey, our data specialist, to kind of run the numbers of where we are in our three schools of students who would be in that 10% ballpark. And again, it's not one thing, you know? If you had a child who had the stomach bug, or, you know, had COVID or something like that. But those are the numbers of where we are. Where at Forest Dale, it is pretty significant improvement, around 12.5%. Oak Ridge is a little under at 12.5%, as is the high school at a little under 16%. I say that with the caveat that we're probably, do some quick math, around the 45% point of the school year. And the cold weather and cold and flu season really has just started. So as I say in the notes, this is something we will continue to monitor. I do know our principals are working hard on strategies, particularly at the elementary level, of more of a personalized touch, a personalized conversation, where it's a lot more effective if the child's classroom teacher is reaching out to the home through a text message, through a personalized email, a phone call, something of that nature to make a connection. And granted, that thousand-piece puzzle piece, sometimes teachers and everybody know specifically why the student is absent and so on. But again, what you look at very carefully, what you monitor, is something that can change. And this is something that we very much want to change. Any questions on this? Christine?
Were there any demographic trends, or was it fairly random? And did you do any kind of disaggregating that data to look at if you exclude legitimate or documented, I shouldn't say legitimate, documented medical excuses, or travel, or things like that?
We haven't gotten that granular. We certainly can. Kind of the interesting piece about, the interesting piece about Forest Dale's data. Here's some good news. Sue Garvey, our data person, ran the numbers from a whole bunch of different perspectives, included out-of-school suspensions, because suspensions count towards it as well. There was very, very little difference. So the good news is, as a district, we generally don't suspend a lot of kids, which is great news. The Forest Dale piece was interesting in that our first, she ran different permutations with keeping out pre-K, keeping out K, and so on. The first graders and the second grader, actually, correct me if I'm wrong, the first graders and the second graders have better attendance than our pre-K and K. And again, pre-K and K not being mandatory compulsory education, that's kind of understandable. But it wasn't a huge difference either way, so. But probably the next update, maybe around that 2/3 mark of the school year, we can get more granular with the data.
Thank you. And again, correlating or not correlating, looking for any trend that would link academic progress with higher absenteeism?
Oh, I mean, you know, we've, we haven't necess, we could definitely do that at the local level, but there's a ton of data looking at the state level on things like MCAS performance and so on of kids with chronic absenteeism versus not. And it's very, very clear. And, you know, we could do something interesting, like look at iReady data, you know, in the course of a school year, seeing that we give it three times and so on.
And that may be helpful on an individual family level in terms of
Yeah.
getting some support for encouraging good attendance.
Absolutely. Yeah. And again, the piece there, you know, sometimes there is a punitive piece here, and, you know, you get the courts involved and so on in extreme cases, but a lot of times it is, the supportive approach is much more effective, and the personalized approach and so on. You know? Bert?
Thanks. I have two questions, very different ones. When I was a high school teacher, the school at Cape Tech, they used to call all the kids who were absent. Do you do that?
Yeah, we have a robocall system.
Okay. The second question is completely unrelated to this absenteeism. What about staff absenteeism?
I haven't crunched those numbers, but that's very easy to do. I do look at the numbers periodically. I could say with an extremely high degree of confidence that we do not have chronic absenteeism rates of eight or more very much at all in this district. I would say of those very, very high rates, it would be somebody out on maternity leave or somebody, as you know, being on the sick bank who's come before the sick bank for a long-term illness.
So generally, you're satisfied with the rate?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further on the absenteeism? Something that we'll hear more about later in the school year. Thank you. New business, first item is changes to the Sandwich Middle High School Program of Studies to include competency determination, or CD. And this is the first reading on this policy change.
Okay, I'd like to give a little explanation of this, and particularly for, please do a story on this, not to tell you what to do, because this is kind of weird and kind of convoluted. And I do have some colleagues across the street that are really, really struggling with this, and that's why I sent the committee an earlier email. Realize when ballot question number two passed in the November election, no longer making MCAS a graduation requirement per se, the actual verbiage of the law changed exactly like this. And it really, it didn't get so much into saying graduation requirement. Instead, it uses this terminology called a CD, CD standing for competency determination. And a CD technically is, have you met 10th grade standards? Okay? Have you met 10th grade ELA math and science standards? So the new language of the law, it's Mass. General Law, Chapter 69, Section 1D, what you can see there is crossed out as measured by the assessment instruments described in Section 1, i.e. MCAS tests. That's gone. But they added the language that says, by satisfactorily completing coursework that it's been certified by the student's district as showing the mastery of the skills, competencies, and knowledge contained in the state's academic standards and curriculum frameworks in the areas measured by the MCAS high school test described in Section 1 administered in 2023, and in any additional areas determined by the board. They need some commas in there. So essentially, they're putting it on the local districts to define competency determination. So you may be kind of saying to yourself, what's the big deal? And honestly, there are elements of this that are no big deal. As I say in the background notes, we do not have a single member of the Sandwich High School class of 2025 that has not already passed MCAS. So we're good. Okay? However, from a policy perspective, we do not have anything in our policy manual, nor at current time in our program of studies that differentiates graduation requirement and competency determination. And are there implications, you know, that in our case might be five percenters? For example, a student moving in from another community, or a student moving in from another We're pretty straightforward as far as what kids take. And as I say in the background notes, and I'm putting it up on the screen, during Christmas break, Jeannie and I kind of went back and forth on taking a look at the program of studies, which you approve on an annual basis, that technically is a policy document, and kind of putting in what you see there in red, adding to not only are the graduation requirements, but what are the CD or competency determine graduation requirements? So again, it's a 10th grade bar, so we don't have the MCAS tests anymore. So we're basically making a statement that English 9 and English 10, which all kids take, will be your ELA. Algebra 1 and geometry, which all kids take, will be your math CD. And then biology and one additional lab science will be your science competency determination. Kevin asked before the question, and there's a hot link to something called the Mass. Core, which is the state recommended program of studies to align coursework with typical college or workforce requirements. We are 100% aligned with that, which is terrific as far as the Carnegie credits. We added some language to talk about kids that need additional work. The state has given the guidance for students who didn't pass the MCAS for years now, at least a decade. We've had something called the EPP, or Educational Proficiency Plan. That will stay in place for students who do not pass either their freshman or sophomore year ELA math or science classes. And then that last paragraph in red, that speaks to if a student does transfer to the school, as we would typically do for graduation requirements, the guidance counselor, and then ultimately Jeannie as building principal, would be the arbiter in looking at the transcript to make a determination about equivalence. Keep in mind, I think our program of studies is pretty straightforward. It's pretty traditional. I had a pretty detailed meeting with the other Cape and the Island superintendents last Friday. It varies in different schools, and particularly, you know, a place like Barnstable, which has a very, very high English learner population, there are many, many different levels of courses that involve sheltered instruction that may or may not be aligned with state standards for grades nine and 10. So there are a lot of sticky points. I think the good news with regard to Sandwich, it is pretty straightforward for us, but I think we have to be thoughtful about the policy piece. And I think the work here is pretty simple and pretty straightforward, and it's based upon the guidance that we're getting from the state to define CD.
And the minimum passing grade in those courses is what?
I believe our minimum passing grade is 60, correct, Jeannie? And again, we could have a, I don't want to unzip this because we have budgets to present, but we could have a very healthy, robust debate about a grade of 61 passing being a mastery of a state standard. I fully acknowledge that. Bert?
There's, there's nothing in that language that has the initials M-C-A-S, correct?
MCAS?
Yeah. I hate to even say the word. Guess how I voted. There's nothing in that document that has, that refers to MCAS, correct?
In our program of studies?
And what you have right up there?
Nothing.
And then the state looks like, because it does have some, it refers to MCAS. Is that a workaround, trying to get around what the voters, the voters voted to tie that, because they refer to the MCAS as something, hey, that was a good thing, so we would like you to do what was in there?
Here's, and again, not to unzip and go off into crazyville. There's a group of people that think that what I showed you here is a really, really poorly-written law. I would kind of concur with that.
Is that a law or a policy?
It's a law. It's Mass. General Law. There is some talks of what the state's definition now is, you cannot use MCAS as part of the competency determination. There are some communities that are saying, well, we can still use it as a graduation requirement. We're defining CD. Now, you're kind of totally going against the will of the state voters by doing that, but there are some communities that at least are giving that some consideration.
The other question I have is on grades 11 and 12 at Sandwich High School, they have to pass courses there, right?
Correct.
Okay, so they accumulate a certain number of credits to graduate.
Correct.
That's like in college, you
Correct.
need 60 credits to get an associate's.
The interesting piece here is, and that's a great analogy, Bert, associate's degree versus bachelor's degree. The competency determination technically is thinking about splitting up the high school in halves, and have you met that bar of 10th grade, almost like have you met, earned your associate's degree, and now can move on to studies towards your bachelor's degree?
You can't graduate high school with the, having met the competencies in 10th grade. You can't graduate. You got to go to grades 11 and 12.
Correct.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other comments? Christine?
Sorry, just some clarifications. You said we currently don't have any students in the class of 2025 who have not passed MCAS. Does that include our students who are out of district?
Um.
And I realize that's a question you might not have the answer to right now.
All but one. And that one student under what we would be passing as defining CD with this new verbiage would be all set. This individual has passed two of the three tests.
Okay. And I think, I mean, that kind of piggybacks on my other question. Obviously, the coursework, the English 9, 10, the required courses are offered at a variety of levels, including those courses that might need to be modified or
Correct.
provide recommendations for students with disabilities in order to access them. But then with just the normal distribution of the population, there will inevitably be some students who aren't able to meet 10th grade competencies. And in the past, weren't, would not have been able to pass the MCAS, even through MCAS alt. So the option of still having a certificate of completion
Certificate of attainment, yes.
still exists for those students.
Correct. And that is a very, very, very small percentage.
Even going back to our courses and our requirements for 9 and 10, even at the minimum passing level, I would imagine that equates to minimum proficiency.
So keep in mind, and I think much of the general public was not cognizant of this, but you know how MCAS has, you know, you're, usually when we report the scores out, you know, meets expectations, exceeds expectations, and then the rung below was needs improvement. Needs improvement or higher was the bar that needed to be passed at 10th grade. In my humble opinion, that's not a terribly high bar.
But you still have two years.
Correct.
To improve on that.
Yeah.
Which you would have under the MCAS system.
Correct. So realize, even though retests are still being given, I'll use air quotes, given, the rest of this school year for high school kids, it kind of has become a moot point. However, it is critically important that we have this policy piece that as a local district now, now that it's kind of been put in our hands, we specifically define CD.
I'm just guessing that this is an interim measure, and that something else will appear in time.
100%.
I just hope that it's not legislated, that whatever it is, is created by educators.
I, I, this state's educational system, in my humble opinion, is the best in the United States. However, my adopted state of 30 years, Rhode Island, did something much, much smarter in the early 2000s. They made the decision to not have, talk about original, their test is called RICAS, but their CD is a performance-based assessment. So kids at the end of 10th grade have to do like a capstone project, or they have to defend their portfolio of work or something, something that's more meaningful than filling out a bubble test. If I were a betting man, I would see, I would predict a motion afoot to go to some type of performance-based assessment as a CD.
Which is authentic assessment
Correct.
of student knowledge, competency.
So even if that doesn't become mandated by the state, is that something that we as Sandwich would want to start to work on and develop on our own as opposed
Gee, if we were like starting a strategic planning process and we wanted to talk about meaningful assess, I wonder if we could do that?
Setting you up.
Yeah.
Good job. Thank you.
Yep.
So in terms of process, this is first reading.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to say anything about?
So I think, you know, in sharing this information, and again, I apologize if I'm being wordy or verbose with all of this, we were thinking, you know, maybe before the next meeting a week from tonight, just having policy subcommittee here to have a public forum. ICAN in Blue Knight Highlights on Friday, or send out a separate email to all of our families, just notifying them of this change in, in policy, just so we could say, you know, we weighed in from people. You know, and again, I do think, Christine, your questions are really good. I do worry about some of our populations and what potential implications could be. But again, with the, here and now, the class of 2025, we're in great shape.
Anything else on this right now? Okay. Next item is the overview of the initial FY '26 Sandwich Public Schools operational budget. Dr. Joe.
Okay. You should have before you, we're kind of a book that has kind of a breakdown of where we are right now, and I think we're in a terrific shape with regard to our budget. We've got what I would consider to be a very reasonable, conservative budget for your proposal. And after my concise presentation, you will hear from our three principals and Sean to talk about their cost centers. I think you've seen this before, but our finance subcommittee, when they met for the first time in November, came up with four, I think, really smart goals of this budget. First and foremost, to provide level services, that is, keeping the existing programs and services for our kids in place, taking into account inflation to, you know, meet our kids' needs. Again, continuing, moving the ball forward and continuing the cycle of continuous improvement with innovation, but ultimately, how do we improve outcomes for all of our kids? Again, we've talked numerous times about any efficiencies that we find to kind of Again, we've talked numerous times about any efficiencies that we find to kind of address our long-term capital needs, and some of that is short-term, but also some of it is the ongoing planning to address some larger issues. And this fourth bullet point I call the perpetual goal, to where can you find efficiencies? Where can we right-size the budget? Because ultimately, we advocate for our kids, but we're also stewards of taxpayers' hard-earned money, and there's a lot of trust that goes into that. So as we do every year, the first time, the first thing we look at is what is our current enrollment? So that first row is our exact October 1st numbers. What we're projecting, and no, I did not jerry-rig this, we're predicting exactly the same enrollment, 2,149. I shared with this committee, I want to say it was probably in November, the NESDEC enrollment report. And it really has two visuals. It kind of looks at your last 10 years, and then it looks forward to 10 years. So as you can see, you see that steady decline from 2014, 2015, but I would also say, take a look at the last three years, the '22, '23, '23, '24, and '24, '25. It represents stability. And again, if my memory serves me correctly, from this October 1st of '24 to the previous year, it was only something like eight students fewer district-wide. And if you look at the trend 10 years out, you do see a stability. Keep in mind, the best of those bars are the first five, because they represent babies that were actually born within our community. A lot of things could happen, you know, with respect to housing, mobility, and so on. So that's why years six through 10, there is a certain degree of variability there. So one of the things that we always take a look at, which is also in the document before you, are our average class sizes. In my humble opinion, they're excellent. They're reasonable. We, I've worked in many places where, you know, you're pushing upwards of 25 to 27. We like to have a scope and sequence where our youngest learners at Forestdale have the smallest class sizes, and then it progresses upwards as you go through the grades. I do have some thoughts to share with regard to right sizing, because I am cognizant of where our numbers are of Oak Ridge versus the middle school grades at Sandwich Middle High School. So the proposal that you have before you is a proposal for $40,810,000. I'm sorry, Kevin. That represents a 3.13% increase over our current year's budget, which is a little bit more than $1.2 million. As I said, one of our primary goals, it maintains our level services, and it continues that forward progress towards what are our main strategic priorities: literacy, numeracy, social-emotional learning, and innovative practices. Our staffing will be commensurate with our enrollment, and again, there is a certain degree of right sizing and taking a look at areas where we have, you know, smaller class sizes or not heavy enrollment. Keep in mind, at this point, we have a grand total of nine retirements that have come in already. So there's, there's some opportunities for attrition. And then planned efficiencies, again, will be reinvested in, you know, as we've discussed here at the table, in capital expenditures. And I've got some good news to share of a couple of areas where we found some nice efficiencies. So the projected funding of this budget, we, in Sandwich, we can typically go very conservative with Chapter 70 and level fund that. Realize that $7,739,000 does not represent the additional $165,000, and that was done for conservative reasons, because that additional $165,000 will be voted upon at Monday night's special town meeting. And typically, that number would be rolled into our Chapter 70 and therefore decrease the town's contribution. And actually, I think the number would go down to about 3.47 from the 3.89. So at this point, you know, that additional $1.238 million needed for a level services budget is coming from the local contribution. So these are always the fun slides, and I will try to give the 64,000-foot view of these, but there's always things that drive the budget both positively and negatively each fiscal year. Obviously, our greatest strength is our staff. We are a people-driven business, so therefore, our salary line is where our largest driver is. We will be entering year two of a three-year contract with all of our collective bargaining units. Our teachers are receiving a 3.25% COLA. Our other associations, they're in different places, but essentially, they're in the ballpark of about $1.50 to a $2 an hour range of COLAs. Keep in mind, as we've discussed here at the table, we did extensive benchmarking, and we feel like these contracts are very, very fair and very much market value. So when you take into account the COLAs along with the steps in the lanes, it's about $1,183,620, which is a hair under 4% for our overall salary increase. Special education, which will be presented upon next week, actually shows a slight decrease in its overall line of about $10,000. We're projecting a reduction of two out-of-district placement tuitions, but also offsetting an additional $100,000 of circuit breaker funds towards those tuitions. Keep in mind, with regard to circuit breaker, it's always a year behind as far as the reimbursement representing the enrollment of students that you have in out-of-district placements. I think we talked about the last, at the last meeting, the great work that's been done through the Summer Scholars Program and the Ride the Wave into Kindergarten Program and the successes. That's one, probably the only recurring expense that we had using ESAR funds. So those funding, that $65,000 to continue those two programs are in the special ed lines. Technology-wise, we've got a little under a 5% increase. A lot of this honestly has to do with kind of inflation. If you look at the textbook trend lines, you see them decreasing or in some cases zeroed out, because everything is kind of in digital format. The way they get you is through licensing fees, software fees, and so on. So, you know, we've done very, very well with our commitment to the literacy program, ARC, and our math programs, Reveal Math and Ready Math. There's also some licensing related to our operations. Think about our budget software like Softwrite, and then also cybersecurity. It's kind of ironic that today, the day that we had a national and international data breach from Power School, which is our student information system, but I think it reinforces the idea that we really, and I've got to give Bryce Harper a lot of credit, really up our game and continue, continue to have a really strong game with regard to cybersecurity. We do have an annual line to refresh both student devices, educator devices, laptops, and our touchboards. We have on cycle, I believe it's been about six years now, six or seven years, to refresh all of the touchboards at Oak Ridge, so that they're similar to what we have at Forestdale and at the middle high school. Buildings and grounds, we are rolling over again. Last year at this time, we talked about a three-year commitment of 200, 200, and 200 for replacement of flooring. That is in there. The good news in red is it gives you perspective on how inefficient heating our wings of the wing school was. We're projecting a savings of about $75,000 to heat the new central admin building. Transportation is a big driver. We are finishing a five-year contract with Lucini Transportation, and by the end of this month, right now, it's out to bid. We've had several, at least, interested parties. We do think it will be a competitive bid process, but we've been advised by our consultant looking at where the market is to budget an additional 7%, which is about $129,000 for regular transportation.
Ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
And I know tonight's not facilities, but is the 200, three years of 200,000 for the carpets going to get us over the finish line?
I'm sorry, Kevin.
Is the 200, 200, 200, 200, is that going to be enough to finish all the rooms?
That's what Chris George is telling me, yes.
Thank you.
Teaching and learning is a overall increase of $23,693, but if you actually go into those lines overwhelmingly, they're either level-funded or decreased. The largest increase is 30,000 to graduate tuitions. This probably didn't make the headlines, but one of the points in negotiations is every year we budgeted 50,000 for graduate tuition reimbursements for our staff. Almost every single year, we blew a hole through that line. So part of the negotiation is we now have a set amount, 80,000, and it's our cap. So we've got to budget that 80,000 in graduate tuitions. We've talked about some of the great work that both Dave Quinn and Jen Kirk have done with regard to competitive grant writing. So we do actually have a slight decrease in our PD line through offsets, through competitive grant funding that they've procured. Athletic, I'm.
Sorry.
Sure.
Quick question on the reimbursement. Is that, what, how are those evaluated? Is it first come, first served? Is, I believe it's first come, first served.
For the most part, it is first come, first served. Dave is step one, who's kind of, and actually, the principals as well, are kind of the arbiter of making the decision about reimbursement. There are set guidelines of what is a reimbursable graduate course and so on. But yes, it essentially will come to kind of your main point, Kevin, kind of an all-call once we get closer to that 80,000 of saying, hey, there's X amount dollars in, you need to get your paperwork in, and so on. Athletics, which you will hear more from Sean this evening, is an increase of a little under 7% or 26,000, largely through kind of four places. The transportation line is almost half of it. And part of that, honestly, and I, hopefully, I'm representing this correctly, Sean, is giving our kids a lot of opportunities and in some cases, some new teams. And so there's transportation, but then there's also the element of being victims of your own success. When you've got, in any given season, a preponderance of your teams making tournament play, additional transportation expenses come with that. He'll talk a little bit more about some of the fees for contest management, some of the things, ice time has also been a key issue as far as some of those costs escalating as well. And then, last but not least, central admin, district-wide expenses. I want to give props again to Bryce Harper and also my partner in crime to my left, Michelle Austin, who've done a fabulous job renegotiating our copier lease contract, just in one year alone, saving $40,000 through consolidating copiers, consolidating all of the toner, the equipment, the supplies, and so on. So that's a really, really nice savings. So kudos to Michelle and Bryce on that piece. So if you look in your book, I think the page is, page four, kind of is the money chart, so to speak, that has the summary of our salaries and then also the expenses. So you see the breakdown from all of our cost centers that have salaries associated with them. Overall, we're looking at 3.99% in salary increases. And then in expenses, it's actually right around a half a percent. And I think, starting with our principals, you'll hear about some of the savings, but realize, a lot of those negative numbers and negative percentages directly speak to the copying and the data savings there as well. So between the salaries and the expenses, you're looking at that 3.13% increase. I want to show this, and hopefully, in my next permutation on February 11th to the FinCom, I will get smart and I will do a graph overlay, because it kind of makes me cringe seeing two graphs side by side. But I just want to show you, again, the whole piece around right sizing of if you were to take the last, I believe we've got seven school years with one, six school years, but one projected, and looking at our enrollment and the trend, and then also our staffing and total FTEs. And if you go to the individual schools, but also on page nine is the overall professional staffing for the district broken down. You know, through right sizing, through attrition, and so on, you know, we slowly have made progress in our staffing and so on. But again, I go back to the point that I made at the beginning of this presentation, that we are anticipating our, the stabilization of our enrollment to continue. So I usually take the time, you know, in talking about our budget and tying it to our goals, and, you know, when we give the presentation on our district improvement plan and school improvement plans, I talk about our strategic objectives and so on, and they're all extremely important. But I'm going to be concise, and I'm going to just kind of go past this, and I think when push comes to shove, I think the most important thing to talk about is our students' experience. our students' experience. And putting together the budget every year is a lot of work, but it's all kind of fun to go on my MacBook and look at some of the photos that I've snapped in the course of a year. And I think about the work that happens at Forestale and Oak Ridge and how kids get personalized instruction, okay? And individual needs are met. I think about what we have with regard to co-curricular and extracurricular activities and the high quality, what we get out of kids each and every single day and how that's growing and expanding. I think about, as Sean will be talking about, the athletic opportunities for kids and having a whole, our participation rates are nothing short of amazing, and how that ultimately leads to a sense of belonging. And, you know, the work that we're doing with regard to social emotional learning and, you know, we had, you know, Shray and Peter talk about the Playbook Initiative and really establishing a sense of community. So I think we've made remarkable, remarkable forward progress. And, you know, in conclusion, I do think our future is bright, really bright. I had to take the eclipse picture. I just, I had to jam it in. But if you look at the things that really excite me about, you know, a new strategic plan, if you look at all of the things that we have focused as a committee at this table, things like student growth and achievement, things like how are we giving our high school kids opportunities towards things like career pathways, the work that's been done by the district safety team, speaking to physical safety, but obviously emotional safety of our students, the richness of, again, our co-curriculars. You know, a silly article was done, and apologies Candy, if you're walking, watching this at home, it wasn't silly, but we did an article in the Enterprise about the cursive club at Oak Ridge that actually has like over 40 kids in it. And Trish has this problem. She's got a problem in the sense that she's got so many kids that are interested in extracurricular clubs at Oak Ridge. And again, I think it speaks to the passion and commitment of our teachers in creating additional opportunities. And what do those opportunities do? They create a sense of belonging to our school communities. And then obviously, the last piece and the planning, and I know that you're all passionate about this, what are we doing to create facilities that truly support 21st century learning? So I bring up all these big picture things because I do think that this budget is a really reasonable budget that moves the ball forward for us and gets us to this place to a very, very bright future and continues a bright future for us in the Sandwich Public Schools. So 12 slides, not horrible, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions or answer, any questions before our principals come on board.
Just before we go there, just in keeping with our former chair, if you have additional questions beyond this evening's presentations, if you would forward them to John, to John, to Joe. And Kevin, as chair of the finance subcommittee, we'll do what we've done in the past so that both those folks and the subcommittee will have that big picture and so those answers can be presented in a concise manner. So, thank you. Thank you. Questions?
Is cursive part of the regular curriculum?
It's, yes and no. I believe, and Trish, correct me if I'm wrong, third grade standard is simply that students learn how to sign their name. So if you were to think about the traditional, I know back in AGOM, I think between grades three to five, every single writing assignment had to be in cursive.
Is there a reason it's not part of the curriculum? Because the last school I was in, they were practicing D that day, but they would, they practiced a letter every day.
I think it has to do with the state curriculum frameworks and what's required, and I think it comes down to there's so much content in those frameworks that it's something that, you know, it has been put off to the side, so to speak.
I understand your answer. I don't have to like it.
Any other questions for Dr. Joe?
I'm just doing my old clarifying question. So this represents a level service budget?
It does.
Despite the fact that the salary lines increase, it does represent a decrease or right sizing of staff. So we haven't added any staff. We are decreasing staff despite the fact that the contractual obligations make the costs go up. No additional staff positions added as part of this budget. Thank you.
Any other questions before we roll into our principals' presentations? Okay.
Chris?
As Mr. D comes up, I just want to apologize everyone for being late. Oh, did I do that too?
Welcome, Mr. D.
Good evening, everyone. How you doing? I'll be pretty brief here. What you're seeing, my proposed budget, it reflects, as I, you know, when I came back here and, you know, was here in September, our, you know, action plan at Forestale, and it mirrors a lot of the, as Dr. Ruscheck talked about, the strategic initiatives of the district. Just an overall quick summary of the Forestale budget. If, one of the big things, a lot of it's level funded. Any savings you see, a lot of it came from the copy, the copiers from, you know, Ms. Austin. But one of the things that might stick out is professional development and travel was down $2,500, and that's just the simple fact that the National Principals Conference was in Nashville last year, and this year I really don't want to go to Seattle. So we allotted that money and moved that money around, but still having to maintain contractual obligations to my assistant. And if, you know, in my contract, anything that, you know, I wanted to do throughout the year, so there was a savings there. Again, our general supplies, you know, we really kept level from last school year. There are some increases in signage, banners, a lot of positive messaging that I really looked at, and I really want to, you know, update and, you know, put up throughout the building for our students. I saw a need as we've added our Transitional Learning Center, which has been really successful this year, a need for, you know, inclusive tables and chairs, flexible and sensory seating in the TLC and in our social workers' offices. And then, you know, classroom supplies are always, you know, emphasized. There's also a, I think, $800 increase or we added in for diversity equity and belonging, inclusive practice section of our library. So we're bringing in books that are going to be available to staff, to students, and families. And that came from our DEIB team that we really wanted to put in to the Forestale School. Just to go over, it's just some of the focus areas of the budget. You know, again, that general supplies item, you know, 80% of our day for our students is spent working with their hands. The amount of manipulatives used throughout the day that need to be laminated, you know, when students are working in small groups and in their classroom. Classrooms, you know, want that sense of belonging in personalizing each classroom for that, for that room and for those 17 or 18 kids that are in there. And then, you know, classrooms equipped to support social emotional needs of our students. Those are important, and every classroom has that, and, you know, no one classroom looks the same, but basically has all the materials in there to support students' social emotional needs. And then, again, the importance that, talking about the momentum we had with high-quality curriculum, being able for students to access that curriculum through the social emotional areas of, in that connection to the teacher and their peers. That is so important to feel like you belong in that classroom, and that really, you know, goes hand in hand with student achievement. And then the last piece, again, I said I'd be brief, how we're aligning with our Forestale in our, in our Sandwich Public School goals. Again, just talking about the emotional regulation and access to curriculum for our students in ARC, in Ready Math, in the, being able to have our peers connect with their classmates and their teacher. These are all priorities of the Sandwich Public Schools and of course, our Forestale action plan. Being able to have students regulated, and again, our young students have big emotions, and being able to support them and have them, give them access to regulate their emotions and to be able to access this curriculum really is, is an important piece of the day at Forestale. And I guess the last point I want to make, you know, at Forestale, I talk about this a lot, it's important for students to be successful academically and socially emotionally in their first educational experience because this is what we're going to, trying to build off of this. I call Forestale the building blocks of their career in the Sandwich Public Schools. So I think this budget reflects our needs, our strategic initiatives, and goes along with Dr. Ruscheck and the district's initiatives. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Bert?
I'm very familiar with a very friendly principal down in Brewster, but you are, the kids love you. And, because I see that with the parents, you know, you, I don't know if you know every student's name now, it's, we're in general.
We're getting there. We're getting there. In kindergarten, you know.
Right. But being very kid-friendly and being very greeting adds a lot to the atmosphere of the building because if kids aren't happy, they don't learn. So keeping them happy, thank you.
Just respect to the materials request. From time to time, we hear stories out there, not necessarily of our teachers, but of teachers in general, of how much out-of-pocket teachers spend to supplement the materials that are provided by the district. Do you feel, and do your teachers feel, that the materials budgets that you've identified help significantly with minimizing what some teachers might feel they need to supplement what is provided for the classroom?
I do, but again, I want you to understand my staff. My staff, I call them the mama bears because they're going to want to give their students everything that they can possibly give them. So I think, you know, in, you know, I meet with my staff each year and we talk about, okay, what do we need? What's important? And I have each grade level talk about that, and at each grade level, there are different needs. And I think we do give a lot of the basics, but then there's going to be people that, you know, will go on and, of course, they're going to, you know, go the extra mile and give their students what they need because there are students that have individual needs that are different from others. So in a lot of ways, they don't want to single anybody out, they're going to buy it for everybody out of their own pocket. I hope that answers your question.
And the parent-teacher organization, I think there are opportunities for funding schools?
There are, there are. Each month, you know, teachers come to the PTA meetings, I think it's the second Tuesday of the month, and they're able to, I think each grade level now, they up to, Trish, to what, 3,000? 3,000 per grade level? So grade levels, whether it's a field trip or for materials, they can request that through our PTA.
Thank you. Kevin?
I just got a question on the, excuse me, apologies. Looking at the delta of the administrator and clerical salaries percentage-wise, there's, I get, like on the teachers, it's not going to be the 3.25 because you have steps and lanes and things like that. I was curious why the percentages seem a little bit higher than what would be in the contracts.
Realize they have steps as well.
Okay.
There's also, because there's less grant funding covering some of these ESPs?
Okay.
You were looking at a clerical line.
I was looking at the administrator and clerical, that's all.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that have to do with the recently negotiated contracts?
Correct.
Yeah. Because the clerical was part of that.
And are many of these people senior?
Most of them are seniors.
So that puts them at the higher levels.
So, yeah, keep in mind the, you know how I talked about the $1.50 to $2 range? The most senior people got the larger end of the range.
Which is disproportionate, not disproportionate, it was negotiated as what they deserved, but it's percentage-wise, it shows up differently.
Correct.
Okay, that's clicking now.
There's also increased longevity's in those lines, too.
Got it? Okay.
Got renegotiated.
It's just helpful to understand, clarity on it.
Any other questions for Mr. Dantwano? Not Dantwano, Chino.
He's answered worse.
There's a flash from the past, I'm so sorry. I am really sorry for saying that.
And by the way, in your, in your book on page 12, there's a picture of a pretty good-looking guy in there.
Play to your audience, I guess, huh?
No, I'm talking about the one above me.
I guess the other question, just before you get out too easy, and I see there's a decrease in, well, a decrease in professional development subs, but there's an increase in substitutes, I guess it works out in the wash.
So one of the things that we talked about is you will notice that there are increases in the sub-lines for a couple of reasons. A, we want to make, you know, we don't want to blow a hole in the sub-line, but B, we've got to take a long, hard look at what we are paying our subs. And specifically, and I think it came to this table, the issue of nursing subs. I've told Nicola, who is our nursing coordinator, we would do some extensive benchmarking to up that rate. So I'm confident we've got the money budgeted to do it. Realize it's not like, you know, we're spending tens upon tens of thousands of dollars on nursing subs, you know, we only have seven district-wide, so we're going to be fine, but we will up that rate.
How much are you paying the teaching subs?
What is it, $1.25 a day?
If they're certified?
Yeah.
I think, was it $1 or $1.10 if they're not certified?
Well, you're low on the non-certified, and you're probably a little low on certified as well, but not much.
And nurses with degrees should at least be comparable.
Yeah, and that's, we get that whole piece, that that's a challenge.
Can I just ask a quick question? So the health services line in each of the schools, I was going to ask about that particularly at Oak Ridge, but if we're on health services, that constitutes the nursing staff? Okay. There's just been an increase in all three schools, and Oak Ridge?
Under expenses or salaries?
Salaries, under salaries. And then on Oak Ridge, when we get to Oak Ridge, but there was a 14.47% increase, $20,000. So I just wanted to know when, when we get to Oak Ridge, if we could answer that. Yeah. Forestale was low at 2.27% increase, Oak Ridge was 14.47%, and the high, middle high school was 6.75%.
So it's probably related to when Michelle was putting in the numbers and you're talking about real people, you're talking about their step increases, you're talking about their educational advancement. So you could have, in one school, two people who are going to top step, and oh, by the way, they have gone from Masters 15 to Masters 30 or something like that, so.
There wasn't an additional higher or?
No.
Okay, okay. That makes sense. Christine?
Just a quick question on the professional staff. Can you just explain the increase in special ed-related staff? Is it a redistribution? Is it a redistribution, or is it, what is that?
For Forestale?
Yeah. It's 4.8 last year to 6.3. No, oops, sorry, 6.3 is this year, I'm sorry, I did this last time, too, going to the 2024, '25 instead of the 25, '26. So we don't have the, do we have the staffing grid that reflects the 25, '26?
Yeah, I, I can share that spreadsheet with you.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Erase that question.
I was going to say, I, I don't know if I added any more staff in special ed.
No, it was the exact same mistake I made last year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year, Trish.
So I'm here to share the Oak Ridge FY '26 budget with all of you today, and hopefully answer any questions that you have. So, first you'll see our overview of our budget. I'm going to draw your attention to a couple of different items that I'll also talk about a little later. One is an increase that you see in our office supplies. In that area, we actually have an increase, because during this year, we actually started to add pickup patrol to our school to help with the dismissal process in the building. As you heard earlier, we have a lot of kids who take part in a lot of different activities, which makes for a lot of confusion, so this process, I feel, is really going to help streamline that for parents, and it's something that they use over at the Forestale School, and it makes a nice transition from one building to the next. Another one that you'll notice is an increase in printing. We are doing some things, as I'll talk about a little later, in our focus area, where we're trying to celebrate accomplishments of students, and so we're be, so we're going to be printing more certificates and working on some messaging around the building. There's a slight increase in phys ed, and that has to do with some additional recess equipment that needs to be replaced. And there's a small increase in science consumables related to just the cost of the new materials that we're using to support some of our new MCAS testing in that, in fifth grade particularly. As I shared back with you in the fall, Oak Ridge has three main focus areas: equity, growth, and climate and culture. You know, in terms of equity, we're, have a focus on co-teaching, DEIB, instructional opportunities, having to do with high-quality instruction, grade-level standards, and intervention. We also have a focus around equitable and responsive practices. In terms of growth, we are working on our data-wise implementation at the building level. That, that process has started sort of at the district-level leadership team, and we've been working that down into the building level, and increasing student voice and ownership of, of learning. And finally, climate and culture, we are celebrating connections and success throughout the Oak Ridge staff and the success of our students, and trying to foster connections aligned to our Ruler Charter. So those were things that I shared with you back in the fall, when we talked about our school improvement plan. And how does that align to our, our FY '26 budget? So in terms of equity, you will notice that our staffing represents a level service budget in which we maintain class sizes between 19 and 23 students per homeroom. We are focused on the co-teaching model and a dedication to student supports in related services, social work, and the TLC. In terms of growth, how you see that aligned to the budget is we have a commitment to focus on data-driven decisions and the use of high-quality curriculum materials. Intervention, professional development is always something that's ongoing, and we're always continually trying to implement best practices and making sure that we know students' needs and how to best address them. And then, going into our final focus area of climate and culture, the Oak Ridge School is a kind and collaborative place, and we continue to make investments in supporting social-emotional growth of students through our membership with Ruler and our partnership with Ruler, responsive classroom every day, and the TLC, and finally, celebrating student success. In culture, we are a culture that believes that all students can thrive, and we do this by seeing the whole child, employing a growth mindset, and providing a range of opportunities for students to find their passions. You heard Dr. Maruscheck talk about a unique problem that we have at Oak Ridge, which happens to do with the fact that we have so many kids wanting to take clubs, and we have so many amazing offerings for kids. Yes, we do have Cursive Club, and it's a wonderful club that kids are super passionate about, but one of the things that we're finding challenging, and we'll talk about at a future meeting, I hope, is how to best fund that. You'll see an increase in the budget for clubs, because there has been such a high demand for clubs, and so that's an area that you'll see increased, not necessarily in the expenses area, but in other places in the budget. And we have our values of around the seven Cs as core to the student experience, and we're trying to do our best to make sure that kids have the skills that they need to be successful as they bridge into the middle high school and beyond. And that's it, I'll be ready to take questions.
Questions? Bert?
As far as co-teaching, I assume you have one teacher teach, for example, social studies and English, and another one teach math and science, is that how that?
Similarly, we have a one who does, our ELA block is longer than the other blocks, so we have one teacher on a two-person team that teaches ELA.
You say two-person, what do you mean?
So, in grades four through six, we have two teachers that make up a team.
But they only have one class at a time?
Correct. Yes. And so, half of the kids go to the ELA teacher, and the other half go to the math, the teachers do math, science, and social studies.
And then they switch?
And then they switch.
And then they switch. So the teacher, so the, do the teachers, instead of having 20 kids, have 40 kids to grade?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Christine?
Really exciting question, and it's not maybe necessarily for Trish as much as Michelle around the, or Joe, around the copiers. So, in the initial presentation, you had said we had realized some cost savings based on renegotiating copier leases, et cetera, et cetera. So how does that vet with the Forestale and Oak Ridge having a significant increase in their copier lease, like a 40% increase?
Uh, no.
You have to look at two lines. The supply line, which is right above it?
Okay.
Is, has gone down 100%.
Yeah, see how it, you see --
And the lease has gone up about 14.
Negative $22,000.
So it's an overall, like, savings of like 70% per school.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Trish, just, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tracy.
That's okay. She was sitting right here.
Might have hit a chord.
I know, we could just have our own little chat.
Um, you mentioned clubs being, are they, is, is it dispersed within the budget, the supplies, or?
So, the, so what happens is, the clubs have some money that's accounted for within the actual budget, and then the other funding is supported through the, the club pass. And so what we have found over time is that the interest in clubs is, and is exceeding what we're bringing in between the budget and what we're bringing in for that club pass. One of the wonderful things about the current system of the club pass is that a child can take multiple clubs, unlimited number of clubs, actually, for a single club pass, but, for example, we still have to pay the advisors. And so, if you have students who are signed up for three or four clubs, and that structure exists, unfortunately, that's not keeping pace with the needs of, that we have to pay out for advisors and materials.
So if you look, it's on page 16, under Oak Ridge salaries, the line item is extracurricular. It's gone from 15,000 this year, we doubled it to 30,000 for next school year. I do think we have to, probably at Oak Ridge, and quite possibly at the high school as well, kind of look at what we're charging for that club fee, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's $50, Trish?
It's $50 for the club fee, and again, that gets you unlimited number of clubs that you can join.
It's a wicked bargain.
It isn't, it's the best, it is the best buy in town.
Yes.
We, we have talked about that at the finance subcommittee level.
Yeah.
Wrestling with it, excuse me, we don't want, we don't want the cost to become a barrier to entry, because there is obviously tremendous value to all of it, but how do we find that balance sweet spot? But, it is certainly on the, the subcommittee radar, both at the elementary level, high school level, and also in the athletic arena at the high school as well. I mean, we haven't changed our athletic fee in 15 years, so.
So in addition to being a wonderful enrichment opportunity for these young people, this is an extended-day opportunity for families.
Absolutely, I think a lot of --
So we are, district is picking up significant support of after-school supervision for these young people.
For those who, who take --
Participate.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so it's important for the --
Right. And studies show that the more connected a student feels to their school environment, the better their attendance is. You heard us reference that issue about chronic absenteeism, so obviously, these types of opportunities for kids are important for that sense of belonging in their school.
And I would imagine, since I raised a couple of latchkey kids myself, that in today's world, I think I'd rather have had them involved in a school-related activity or club --
Absolutely.
-- than sitting home on the couch doing this and eating snacks.
Absolutely.
Okay.
They might have snacks during their extracurriculars.
Well, that's true.
They do, actually, yeah.
Yeah.
Here's a, not directly related to the numbers, but, we're going to, you know, eventually get to the, talking about bus contracts. Do you have a, you know, I expect you have an exact percentage, but do you have kind of a gut feel of what percentage of families do pickup vice use the, use the buses?
So, we have probably about 100 cars that come through for parent pickup at the end of the day, so it's a, it's a good percentage out of our, you know, even if you think of one student getting in each of those cars, out of our 674 students.
15%, 15% or more.
Good number.
Got it, thanks.
And that doesn't include kids that are getting picked up even later for clubs, that's just on the regular parent pickup.
Okay, yeah, that's a good point.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you, Trish.
Thank you.
Mr. D, I know you're in the crowd, did you have a gut sense of what the percentage is for Forestale?
Pretty much a cent.
Okay.
Those of you who could not hear him at home, because he wasn't on speaker, it was 18 to 100 as well, so about 15% of the, 15 to 20% of the students. Thanks.
Good evening. Hello, Happy New Year. So, for Sandwich Middle High School, we have the following proposed budget. The items in blue at the top are, are increases, and if you notice, the common denominator is that they are material-based, which is general inflation, really, for material-based classroom supplies, professional development conference increase, final, the fine art department as well, they use a lot of materials for the arts, science as well, technology, computer science. So slight increases, and you can do that comparative look on the next slide, which will look at the spreadsheet. But down below, in red, we do have significant savings. Last year, we did add the $10,000 increase to host the Niasq Visiting Committee for three days, so that no longer is necessary, so that, that's out. Broadcasting, we invested in several new cameras, brand-new, last year, that now, that's not an every-year need, so that is as needed, so that no longer, that money is not needed there. The supplies for data processing, we've discussed already for the district. And then, at the middle high school, we did an inventory of our actual, of where the copy machines were in the building, and, and kind of analyzed the efficiency level there, and came to the conclusion that we don't necessarily need some where they were. So for us, it was a decrease, and I think also at the secondary level, there is less printing, just by nature, so. So this you have as well, I'm sure, in the, in the workbook, but this is essentially what I just provided on the previous slide, with the, kind of the larger increases or decreases. The, the decreases in red, and then the increases honestly are, are pretty minor, I, I think, for the middle high school. So we come in comparatively with last year under, with a decrease, and, so a 12% decrease, given the, kind of the items that I just presented. And then, our priorities have not changed, and our targets remain the same. So, so all of, all of the, you know, the budget proposals do include our, our mission for supporting teachers, professional development, creating optimal educational environments for students, curriculum updates and development, and, and really kind of building our pathway program for the middle high school, with, with applied learning partnerships, and training for teachers, and supplies that are needed in those specific pathways as well. And, that's, do you have any questions?
Questions? Pretty lean, but getting good results.
I'll do one comment here, and I run into your kids mostly at the supermarket.
They're hard workers.
At the supermarket, and, and they speak generally pretty, pretty well of the school. The only complaint they have, can you guess where the only complaint is?
I, I would assume it would be related to the telephone.
Yes, it is, that's, they, they, they say that's overly, that's overly restrictive. I say, well, that's too bad. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Jeannie?
I'm sorry. Question, I just, I want to, if I could, if I could. I guess you are dismissed.
Okay. I won't leave, I'll stay over there, just in case.
Hello, how are you?
Very well.
Evening, everyone, how are we? So I tried to take each of the, sort of the items within the spreadsheet there, and try and give an explanation as to what the changes were, and why the changes took place for, for each of the topics that I was dealing with. So contest management can be anything from officials to games, to the people working at the scorer's table, to the police officers that we have, whether it's a, a home basketball game, or a hockey game at Gallo, whether it's the Sandwich Police or the Bourne Police. So, officials, we'll start with, with them, you know, can range anywhere from $73 for an official, to 95, to some are upwards over $100, depending on the, the sport that we're participating in and that we're hosting. Some are one official, some are two officials, so those costs are, you know, are, in order to have the games, in order to play the games, we need the officials there. And, like Joe had referred to earlier, and this will probably be a, a common theme in a lot of these, we end up hosting a lot of games, we end up going to a lot of games, we have multiple teams with each, with each season. Just looking at a spreadsheet here, for, you know, soccer, there were 72 times where, you know, an official was being paid based on middle school games, and freshman games, and JV, and varsity, on the, on the boys and girls side, so that's just a, a nature of the beast in terms of having the, hosting these games. So those are some of the, the contest management, again, officials, ticket takers, people that work the scoreboard, the police, site supervision, even when we have music at the basketball games, or, you know, I have somebody doing the announcing at the games and things like that, so those are all part of, of contest, contest management, and the goal is to make sure it's a positive experience, and the kids feel valued. seem like small things, but they're important to me, and I think important to the, to the athletes. Athletic transportation, obviously Joe had referred to this earlier, is obviously a huge, a huge part of it, is a big piece of, of what we're doing. So I sort of worked off of the numbers that we had worked with last season for the Southshore League, and for this season with the Southshore League. We are moving back to the Cape and Islands League, so I think we would be looking at something different next year with the trips. I was just looking at a, a bill we had to, a trip to Norwell, and I think it was, I think it was $797 for that trip, and then one to, I think it was, maybe Plymouth was $390-something dollars. So, you know, there's, there's big savings, I think, with, with the move, with the move back. We've already added, you know, potentially two football games in the first four weeks that would be Bourne and Upper Cape Tech. So that would be, instead of going to Plymouth North, or, you know, a school further away, Cardinal Spelman or something like that. So with the move back, I think it's giving us more opportunities, especially at the sub-varsity levels for games. I was noticing a lot of our middle-school games are with Cape teams, and so I think, I think we'll see a change with that. But again, as Joe referred to earlier, you know, in the fall, we had 83 trips, winter 79 trips, in the spring 82 trips for the high school, for the middle-school fall 18 trips, middle-school winter six. That's because we're at the Center for Active Living, which I take the bus, I take them over to practice, so if you ever see me on Quaker Meeting House Road, please don't beep or anything, I try and, I try and go with the speed limit, but I've been taking them over to Quaker Meeting House Road, to the Center for Active Living, I should say, for their, um, middle-school practices, in order to save us a couple bucks there, so. And then we also added in what we thought, excuse me, projected costs for fall, winter, and spring, for the steamship and, and Highline for those, for those trips for next year. So that's sort of the explanation for the transportation piece.
Can I make a quick comment?
Drum.
The, and, you know, people can debate the, the moves back and forth, the other nice part of, in addition to the lower cost, it's lower cost because it's less time on the bus, but, which means the kids are getting home sooner, which my colleague to my right will be very happy about, because hopefully they get home and open their books a heck of a lot sooner than they have in the past.
Right.
So, and just going back to the contest management, just for everyone's awareness, the, the price of officials is not something that's negotiated, they're set by the MAA. They're statewide set, they don't change.
Yep, yep.
Where is the ice time figured in?
Uh, right here, athletic supply budget. Yep, so, okay, I'll go, I'll go, I'll go right to that. So we looked at last year's numbers for boys and girls for hockey, and so we had about 128 times that boys hockey incurred a cost for using the rink at $285 time, $285 each time was used. So that's because we have a JV and a varsity team for the boys, and that's all at Gallo. And for the girls, it was approximately 81 time, 81 times at $285 each time. And this is typically for a practice, it's 50 minutes, you know, like, a couple of days a week, our boys practice in the morning, and they practice from 6:00 to 6:50. So it's at a premium in terms of time, it's at a premium in terms of our availability to get somewhere and get back in time, you know? So, you know, that's certainly, I don't think, I don't know a ton about hockey and, and how it runs, but I don't, I wouldn't see that $285 going down as a number, and I certainly would not want, with the amount of success that we have, and the players that we have for hockey, to see, to see those numbers go down, and in fact, I'd, I'd love them to go up in terms of participation.
In the past-
Yeah.
The Hockey Boosters organization-
Mm-hmm.
Major part of their fundraising was to offset the cost of ice time. Where are, are we seeing that?
So I, I, I philosophically have a bit of a issue with asking boosters for covering the cost of a sport that their, that their kids are already playing to participate in. We don't ask it for golf, we don't ask it for basketball, for, you know, if we have to add new nets, or if we're, if we're using Quick Drive for the baseball field and things like that. I know in the past, I think it had been somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000, but in the grand scheme of what we're being charged, I'd rather a boosters program use that for equipment for the athletes, whether it was for sweatshirts that they're getting, or for their banquet or something like that. I just, I, I didn't feel comfortable doing that, because again, I just, I don't think it put enough of a, of a dent in that bill, and I also, like I say, don't, didn't feel it was right going to one group and not to other, other groups.
I think other districts are struggling-
Mm-hmm.
With the cost of hockey-
Sure.
-for example, as well. This is a discussion for another day, but do you see more collaborative-
Sorry.
...opportunities in the future for funding these extremely expensive sports?
I could, I think as long as we sort, sort across the board with, with everybody, and with every, and with all teams involved, and with all stakeholders, I, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's not the, I don't know, fault is the right word, the fault of the, the athletes or the, yeah, that, that, that's the cost of the sport that they participate in, you know? The, the skates are also expensive, and the, and the sticks are expensive, you know? It's, it's an expensive, it's an expensive sport, but it should still be viewed with the same amount of, I don't know, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't, I don't feel like that should be looked at, like with a microscope and the others, not as well, if that makes sense.
From your perspective, I certainly support what you're saying.
Sure.
From a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayer, we need to ask the questions.
I get it, totally. Yep, and, and I know, again, in speaking with other athletic directors, it's, it's something that they, they also deal with as well, yeah, so I, I totally get it.
I, I share some of Dr. Moore's concerns, so the rest of the committees, it's another thing that the, the finance subcommittee's been looking at, we actually, you know, did an analysis of like, what each sport costs per player. Hockey is the most expensive one, and it's a big driver's ice time, but some are, might be surprising, cross-country was actually, per, per athlete was fairly high, because it's a small number of students that participate, but you still have the stipend and the transportation costs.
Right.
It does go back to, what do we charge? We charge $150 per sport, the family cap, I think, of $550 or $600.
$600.
Right, so, um, I don't want to charge somebody any more than we absolutely have to, but it is something that I think we need to look at. One of the first things they teach you as an official is that the court, the rink, the field is an extension of the classroom. I, you know, it's how, it's how we manage, you know, officiating, but it also applies to the student. It is, just like the co-cur, the, the extracurriculars, this is so invaluable to the overall student experience that, you know, it, it's, it's an important part of the budget. I'm not being parochial, I, I, I feel that strongly about, regardless, the middle-school kid who's out on that court, who's practicing, who's getting exercise every day, keeps them motivated in class.
Mm-hmm.
I was speaking to a, a coach from another town, he said, if it wasn't for, you know, specifically as a basketball coach, his couldn't, his kids wouldn't be in school.
Yeah.
It's the driver for some kids to study and, and stay everything else.
Sure.
Sorry for the commentary.
Yeah, no worries, no. Um, yeah, so.
How many, um, across the three seasons, realizing some kids are, you know, multi-sport athletes, what's our kind of total participation?
So, almost a, almost a thou-
Plus or minus, I don't need the exact number.
Almost a 988. So across the three seasons, and again, that's, that's, could be kids, you know, you know, playing multiple, multiple seasons, but I went off, you know, fall, fall this season, winter, and then last spring, and it was close to 1,000 kids are participating, which is again, like, you know, like we, I was just at our girls' hockey game, and it was a 4:30 game, and we were playing Ducksbury, and just, there's kids there from other sports that are there at 4:30 on a, on a Wednesday afternoon, so it's just, I, you know, again, I can only speak from my experience at other, at other schools, and maybe it's better, maybe it's worse, but I think the level of participation and the level of buy-in is really impressive, and something that I don't, I don't ever want to lose here.
We have the, the collaboration with the, for the girls' hockey, right? We, we do, like a-
Yep.
So they're contributing to the ice time, those districts are, as well.
Correct, yeah, so at the end of the season, what we would do is we would take the, basically the cost of the, of, to run the program for the season, how many athletes from, from that school, and almost go what it would cost per athlete, and then-
Okay.
-get sent to those schools, that's what we did last year, so Carver-Bourne and Mashpee.
Mashpee, okay. And I just heard that the boys' hockey is winning 2 to 1, right?
Oh, great.
Yes.
Okay, they're playing Rockland.
A little under 10 minutes.
Yes, good.
I know you guys are really interested in more discussions from the finance subcommittee, so we actually did, that was a particular point of interest of mine, while our students paid $150, and obviously the cost per player was more than $150, the cooperative students paid full freight. So it was basically, if it cost, you know, make, if it was $10,000 and it was 10, and 10 athletes, every kid from out of town paid $1,000 if you, I'm just trying to do easy math.
Districts.
Districts, yeah, sorry. But they did, they did not get any kind of discount. The, the Sandwich taxpayers did in no way subsidize the kids from out of town, and those, it's a cooperative, just to be word nerdy, and those are good, that's good for two years, and has to be reevaluated at the end of the season, correct?
Correct, so you, yeah, so we're in, we're in year, we're in year two. And fees in clinics, so the huddle typically goes up $500, at least, Family ID typically goes up, Family ID is, most of you know, Danielle, Kevin, I know you guys know, with, with registering for, excuse me, sports and clubs even, that's just how we get all of our registration done. Huddle is when you get my nagging emails with the live-stream links to all of the games, that's for huddle, and we are fully go with that in terms of all of our indoor events, and any outdoor events that are on the turf, on the condo, get covered through huddle, so those are the ones that you can send out to family and loved ones, and then athletes and coaches can use the video analysis for putting together highlight films, or using it for recruiting. It's, it's an invaluable asset to have, in most towns have it now, most towns, athletic programs, I should say, have their own, you know, Sandwich Huddle, or Norwell Huddle, or, or whatever it is.
Hard to put a value on Grandma watching from home.
Yeah, it's-
If she can't make it from here.
It's the best.
And you, can, do you do that for the sub-varsity teams as well, or is it just the varsity games?
Typically just the varsity teams.
Is there a per contest?
So you only have so many hours that you can-
Okay.
-do, so I, I wouldn't, I'd prioritize all the, the varsity games-
Understand.
First, yeah.
Kind of answered my question, it's, there, there is a per-hour fee.
Yeah, yeah.
Or there's max, got it.
Um, and then we have, this also covers different dues that we have, whether it's for Cape and Islands, or for the indoor track, things like that, so the different dues that we have, and to be part of those leagues. And then finally, so again, I, I value the, the game-day experience for, for our student athletes, and for the people being at the, the games with music intros, anthem, and things like that, and making sure that scoring is accurate, and I have people there doing it, and people working the, the scoreboard, and I finally have a, I feel like this year I have a good crew of people that I can go to. Last year, I, you know, I didn't know who was my field hockey person, and who can I turn to in a lot of situations, so it's been, it's been helpful this year. Providing safe transportation for our approximately 52 teams that are going out, provide as many games as possible for our 52 teams, like, you know, freshman girls' basketball, working to get games with them, I just, Hanover just reached out, and they said, "We can play you in two games, but we have to host two games," and it'd be hard for me to say, you know, to, to Coach Kristen Barrett, like, you know, "Sorry, I can't send you to, to Hanover for those games, even though you only have six on your schedule, or eight on your schedule." So I get it, it's a fine line, but I probably, you know, I, I err on the side of trying to find as many games as possible for them. Making sure our teams are in proper uniforms and equipment, and a lot of teams do their own purchasing of equipment, you know, I know, like Mike McNeil will, through his boosters, will get, you know, a different jersey that they have for, for some games, and hockey, they do a lot within their team for purchasing their own gear. So that's done a lot, a lot of times by teams, because I, we don't get them every single year, so some teams might say, every two years, we want to get in a uniform, so we're going to do a fundraiser for something like that. We have to pay to maintain status quo in all of our leagues, and then for our coaches and athletes to use, again, things like huddle to, to make the most out of their experience. So, again, it's a, like Joe said, a little bit under 7% increase with a large part of that due to the transportation, but when I had put in for, when we looked at transportation for our first year in Southshore, it was, I think, close to like $30,000 over what had been budgeted, so I kind of feel like I'm in a, an interesting spot of trying to gauge where we will be for Cape and Islands, and I, I wouldn't project it being, I don't project it being like it was for the, for the Southshore League in terms of the travel, so it's, it's, I wouldn't suspect us obviously going over that, but I, I think we'd be able to make some, uh, better inroads with what the cost would be for getting, getting to games for all levels.
And I would say that I think for at least the last three years, maybe four years, we at the table have said that the athletic budget wasn't even close to what it was budgeted. So what you've been able to do is get closer to what is a reality-level service budget for the athletic department.
Right. Any questions?
Of course. I know that salaries wasn't part of, of your presentation, but can either you or the crew talk to the changes in the athletic salaries line, specifically around the increase of the about 20% in the athletic trainer line, as well as the elimination of the pool ESP?
So I can speak to both of those. The athletic trainer, in my humble opinion, was grossly underpaid, and I believe, I want to say last, late last spring, we resigned a contract with her. She does an outstanding job, and the amount of hours, seriously, whenever I'm at the high school, whenever I go to any contest whatsoever, I'm seeing Kelly, so-
I don't, I don't want to speak over you, but I was literally just talking to this with, talking to Kelly about this at the, at the hockey game, because something came up about, we had to reschedule a basketball game, and, you know, she'll be like, "Oh, God, I gotta go," and she goes, and I said, when I was coaching, we, they, they weren't at all of our prac, they definitely weren't at all of our practices, they were at our games, and she's at every practice, every game, it doesn't matter the level. A middle-school kid comes in and is like, "Can you tape up my wrist?" Like, and it's, she'll take care of that kid as well as she'll take care, she's, yeah, so, she's, she's a huge-
A little bit sizing of herself.
She's a huge help, in a lot of ways.
Yeah, so, so we did a lot of benchmarking and so on, so that is a significant hike, but I think it was one of those positions that kind of grew, that, you know, I think she came on board, you know, with my predecessor, I don't know if it was necessarily a full-time position initially, and the position has really, really grown. So she and I had kind of an extensive conversation, I got Sean's input as well, and we did a lot of benchmarking to see. So in my humble opinion, a very, very well-deserved hike. The second piece, the, the pool ESP, that I would consider to be kind of the, the right sizing piece, really kind of a questionable need for that position, attendance was, was kind of an issue, so, at-
What role did that pool ESP serve?
the, the pool ESP, that I would consider to be kind of the, the right sizing piece, really kind of a questionable need for that position. Attendance was kind of an issue, so
What role did that pool ESP serve? How did, what, what, what was that role?
Some, students who had, students in various programs that had mobility needs and so on, that was part of her role.
To support during pool, the pool for PE class or on a regular basis?
Not during, not during- It was like a monthly thing, I think. And students from Oak Ridge would come-
Yeah, could be from other schools.
I think Jeannie can speak to a little more specificity.
Yeah. So, so part of the PE Health and Wellness Department, their PD last year was to all become certified in WSI safety, lifeguarding, CPR, first aid. So by training the staff with the PE department, we currently now have internal support for the pool. So we want kids to use the pool for PE during the school day. We want to host Oak Ridge students as well to come with their programs as well. So we definitely have our pool point person, Wendy Pierce, and now we have a series of backup as well. So, so, so that kind of explains like the, we built that capacity within the building to have certified people able to support students in the pool.
Okay, so it's not limiting any access of certain students by decreasing?
No, no. If anything, it would have opened more. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Kevin, you were getting started. Oh, Tracy.
I'll just reiterate what both Mr. Donovan and Dr. Murshack said about the athletic trainer, Kelly Spurr. She's a rock star. Like, you think Mr., all the kids like Mr. D?
Yeah.
Okay, you haven't seen how the student athletes respond to Ms. Spurr. You know, in their, in their, in their lexicon, they'd say she's an icon.
She is, yeah. And she does a lot. She helps in a multiple, multiple ways within the athletic department. She's awesome.
If you go to, in the fall, multiple fields running, that golf cart is getting a workout. You know, yesterday, there's three basketball games that start at 3:00. You know, she's there taping them from right after school. That's not done until 8:30, and that's, and then it's right off to the hockey game the next night, things like that. There's a lot to it. And it's invaluable for the safety of our kids. We've seen that on certain nights.
Tracy, question. I don't know really where this falls exactly with, I don't know if it's a professional development, but I know we had talked about coaches having their own training, and then especially if a coach was outside of the district coming in. Is that part of a budget? Is that extra dollars for training? Has anything changed or been added on?
No, I haven't changed or added any, anything in there because a lot of it is used through the NFHS site, which is free, free courses that they can, that they can take. If they had to take one that was a full NFHS certification, I think it would be $95. And that's something that we would, we would just cover.
So kind of, it's still in the planning stages, but this will probably be one of my future superintendent's report update. The principal of Cape Tech and Billy Terranova and the athletic director are trying to organize, you know, maybe recall that going back two years ago, the athletic director and superintendents had to attend a workshop called Addressing Hate in School Sports that was sponsored by the MIAA. I know last year, Sean and Jeannie did a weekend workshop. The idea is now to bring this to our student athletes. So Billy and the AD are in the process of kind of pricing it out to have the team that does the work through the MIAA from Northeastern University to come here on Cape to do, I think it's at least a two-year sequence with our coaches and with our student, like our captains, our student leaders. So that's something that is ongoing in planning, and hopefully we can, the second semester, have that wrapped up with the whole program.
I also, sorry, I will say, I, I didn't realize, I forgot to mention it. So we have the MIA worksheet workshops. We do have $1,500 budgeted for those specific things. So yes, we would have it in there to send multiple coaches or myself to anything like that. Sure. You're welcome.
Looking at the coaches' budget line item, there's 52 teams. You have approximate, I know some teams have more coaches than others, but ballpark of how many?
So close to about 60 different, 60 coaches or so. You know, some, some sports have more, some, some have less. It depends sometimes on if we're, how many levels we're running, you know, but upwards of 60. And, you know, we're fortunate too that we have a lot of veteran coaches that are around to coach multiple, multiple sports and coach them at a really high level. You know, like Jerome Fay and, you know, Kelsey and people that have been around for, you know, that, that coached multiple sports. And, you know, Colleen McDonald, who's coaching three different, three different seasons, you know. So we're lucky in that way, I think. It's continuity. Somebody, another athletic director said that to me a while ago of like, you're working, you're walking into a good situation where you have continuity in your coaching staff, with people that have, that have been there and, you know, understand the athletes and understand the school, which I think is helpful for me. And it's been helpful for me to have a lot of veteran coaches that, that understand it and get kids.
And keep in mind, just as a clarifying point, the coaching stipends also have a step system as well. So I think that's an important point. Keep in mind, through the negotiations process, seeing that we were hypercognizant of this current year's budget, the agreement was that all of those Appendix B stipend, coaching stipends did not change from last year. However, the changes, I think it was a COLA that was commensurate, the 3.25% are in effect for FY '26.
Right now, I think.
Any other questions for Mr. Donovan? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you very much to all the administrators for their presentations tonight. Appreciate it. Moving out of the budget discussion for tonight and into other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, I'll just mention, if you saw the Globe yesterday, it was a really good article on the front page about financial literacy courses at Westwood High School. And I know that that topic has come up here at the table. I know there have been discussions with our high, middle high school principal, just putting it out there, that it seems timely. And certainly, as we're looking at four years of required math, the Westwood course seemed to have some real math in there for practical living. So maybe we'll hear more about that as the year goes on. Any other topics unreasonably anticipated?
You do, you do have two Westwood alumni right here, by the way.
Yeah. I will be sending out further communication tomorrow. I sent out to all of our families the unfortunate news about the National Power Schools data breach. Bryce Harper did a webinar at 3:00 today. Turns out it was a Ukrainian actor, as it was described, who got involved with the hack. There was an intimation that it was kind of a ransom-type situation. They portrayed that they had a high degree of confidence that this was a single actor and that the data had been secured by them, and it has not been exposed yet. However, I'm anticipating getting kind of their statement, and I will be forwarding that to the families.
When you say it was secured by them, do you mean Power School or the-
By Power School, yes.
To clarify. Thank you.
Yeah, because I think in the publication that came through on the email that came from Power School, I didn't read it absolutely carefully, but there was the assertion that there was no ransomware. But my sense is that they caught it.
Yeah. And it's kind of interesting, and Bryce and I had a conversation about this like an hour before the meeting. They've hired CrowdStrike. Maybe you've heard of that company recently in the news. CrowdStrike will be doing an investigation of what happened, what happened, and within the next week or two, there should be a full report.
Subcommittee reports. Any? None? Stand by. There probably will be a couple in the next, a couple of weeks. Liaison Advisory Committee reports. Danielle?
I just have one. The CPAC, Special Ed Parent Advisory Council, is going to be hosting a, a parent training about transition planning, and it's going to be in, at the Upper Cape Tech library. They're going to meet together, the Upper Cape Tech CPAC and the Sandwich CPAC, and they're doing a transition planning meeting on January 22nd, Wednesday, at 6:00. You can either attend in person or virtually, and BJ McNamara has sent out an email to, to all families about this.
Warrants. Can I have a motion to approve the warrants?
I move that we approve the warrants as presented and signed by a majority of the school committee.
Second, second by Christine. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
7-0-0, approved. Public forum, the second public forum. Does anybody wish to be heard at public forum? I don't see anyone, so we will close the public forum. Future agenda items? Anyone?
Oh, you're turning your mic off. I thought you were turning it on. I would just, as you, you already mentioned, I actually sent a note to Soup on the, and the high school principal about the personal finance. I'd like to see that on a, as a discussion topic in the future. Once we get done with the budget, February's fine.
Very good. Acknowledgements and closing remarks.
Again, just to say thank you to all the presenters tonight. There's a lot of work that goes into what is, you know, just a quick Excel spreadsheet. I know there's a lot of machinations behind it. I would offer to the, you know, anybody listening to us at home, or, you know, we're, I forget exactly the three-point, whatever the percentage is.
3.13.
One of the things that does not, there's a lot of towns around Massachusetts that are looking, that schools are looking at 10% increases because they didn't use their ESSR, they used their ESSR funds for recurring expenses. And that's been a, a topic since ESSR became a word or an acronym, including before many of us were even on this committee. But we didn't do that. It put us in a better position than some others because they've been using that money that, to support staffing that we did not do. So I know it's big numbers, nobody wants to spend more money than we need to, but actually, what you're seeing here does show a history of fiscal responsibility.
I know you're interested in how the public knows, is knowledgeable. Why don't you explain what ESSR funds are?
I don't know what the acronym is.
ESSR stands for elem-
Not so much what it stands for.
Elementary and secondary emergency relief.
They came to us during COVID.
It's COVID funds.
Two phases through COVID, ESSR 2 and ESSR 3. This district probably procured well over $3 million in those ESSR funds. And I, we will have this on the website tomorrow. I would advise, you know, the first couple pages are a letter from me summarizing, you know, the, the state of affairs of this budget. But to Kevin's point, there's been a lot of districts that are falling off, you know, what is referred to as the fiscal cliff.
Well, we use them wisely. We use the-
Yeah, we, we use them for things like playgrounds, for upgrades to HVAC and so on. And, you know, and again, to the point, you know, the only recurring expense, and I think it was really, really smart money, was over the last four years, the Summer Scholars Program, and over the last two, the Ride the Wave and Decay Program. And really, if you're talking three to four million, you spent $65,000 for that, you did a good thing.
But we didn't, we didn't depend on them for the future, and so we're not stuck with a 10% increase.
That's exactly my point.
Right.
We don't have a structural deficit, and unfortunately-
Term ESSR funds, I'm not sure everybody-
Oh, I'm sorry. That's all good.
I, I, I can say at the table and kind of sharing some of this budget information with the committee, you know, again, same meeting with Cape and the Islands superintendents, the majority of our neighboring communities, to Kevin's point, are right now at this point in the process at a 7% to 10% increase in their budgets. That's pretty significant.
That's override territory.
Yeah.
And consistently, over the period of that funding, probably at least several times a month, we would get messages from DESI, from various groups, from MASCE, how to and not to expend that money, workshops over and over again. We heeded that recommendation, those recommendations.
It's just like other grant money where we use it for the program and not the staffing piece. Because then that grant falls out, you can't support it.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't make a motion to adjourn until, when is it? It's next week, isn't it?
It is, January 15th.
The original Martin Luther King Day at 6:00 P.M.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It's a tie.
I defer to Ms. Benanda.
All right. Seconded by Danielle. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, 7-0-0. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Hey, how are you? Happy New Year to you, Taylor. How are things? That's good.